Good. We thank you, folks, for your patience. Joanne?
Okay, I need a motion to exit executive session and re-enter the public meeting. Tom, and a second?
Second.
Christine, all in favor? That's everyone. Okay, welcome, everyone, to the annual reorganization meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge Allegiance. The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, in the event of an emergency, those exits at the rear and the side of the auditorium will now accept nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education for the 2021-2022 school year. Xavier?
I nominate Christine.
Thank you, Xavier.
Christine? Do I have a second?
Michelle.
Michelle? All in favor? That's everyone. Okay, congratulations, Christine. I will now turn the meeting over to you, and we will accept now nominations for Vice President.
I'll make the motion for Xavier.
One second?
And a second?
Teresa?
All in favor?
That's everyone. Okay. Now I will administer the oath of office to the newly elected board members and the President and Vice President.
Should we carry our mic packs with us?
I guess, yeah.
I think you're fine with that.
I mean, it could take it off. It's clipped to me.
It's fine. Speak loud.
Any particular order you want? Oh, wait, I have to do two. I, Christine Bernanke, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board trustee. I, Christine Bernanke, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of Board of Education, according to the best of my ability. I forgot that part. You want to do it, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I, Teresa Sullivan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board trustee, according to the best of my ability.
I, Thomas Galvin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board trustee, according to the best of my ability.
I, James W. Polanski, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of Schools, according to the best of my ability.
Christine, now you can take off.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your literal load of confidence.
Where are we?
District Clerk?
Okay. Yep, just trying to wait for delay.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Joanne Miranda as District Clerk for the 2021-2022 school year. I have a motion. Xavier, and a second? Simee? From Michelle?
I didn't say a word.
Second from Michelle, all in favor? That's everyone? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Kim Zelman to the position of Deputy District Clerk for the 2021-2022 school year. I have a motion. Michelle, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everybody. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Jill Miranda as District Treasurer for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Xavier, and a second from Kelly. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Jean Dunn to the position of Deputy Treasurer for the 2021-2022 school year. Can I have a motion, please? Xavier, and a second from Michelle, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution establishing a standard workday for appointed officials. Can I have a motion? Xavier, and a second from Teresa. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Gercio Ngercio as General Counsel for the 2021-2022 school year, with a retainer of $50,000 and a litigation rate of $270 per hour, $155 per hour for law clerks, and $130 per hour for paralegal services. Can I have a motion, please? From Bill, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Gercio Ngercio as Labor Counsel for the 2021-2022 school year, with a retainer of $89,000 and an hourly rate of $270 per hour for litigation services other than those related to collective bargaining agreements between the district and its employee units. I have a motion, please. Xavier, and a second from Tom. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint Serino and Associates LLP as the district's internal auditor for the 2021-2022 school year, at an annual fee of $27,172. And I have a motion. From Michelle, and a second from Kelly. All in favor? That's everyone. You good? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint members of the Audit Committee for the 2021-2022 school year, as indicated. Are they indicated?
Indicated as per District Policy 5572.
Okay. As indicated, as per District Policy 5572.
You'll have to make a motion here. I did not feel it was my place to put names down.
To put names, okay.
Serving at the end of last year, Bill and Kelly. And Kelly did a lot of learning, so she's ready to go.
I'll stay. Has anyone spoken to Rich?
Anyone else want to volunteer?
Yes, he would like to continue as well.
Yeah, he's staying. Oh, as our, that's...
Community member.
Yes. Mr. McGrath.
Rich McGrath, correct.
Okay, then, so our other... We might as well talk about policy and audit at the same time, it's probably easier, right?
No, I think you want to make a motion, and...
I was just needing another person, right? Don't we?
No.
Oh, we don't need another person.
No, we're good.
Oh, okay, I thought we were looking for another person. Okay, great. So, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education... I was going to name the people.
Okay.
That the Board of Education appoint members of the Audit Committee for the 2021-2022 school year is Bill and Kelly and Rich McGrath.
Yes.
I have a motion. A motion from Bill, and a second from Michelle. All in favor? Okay, thank you, that's everyone. Okay. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint three trustees to the Policy Committee for the 2021-2022 school year. I think I got what you're saying. Now you want to discuss it after we make a motion?
Well, you can discuss it before you make the motion, but I thought you were going to policy before you made a motion.
I, no, I wasn't. I just thought we needed another person, so I didn't want to overlap. Okay, so...
So, sitting on the Policy Committee...
So far, is Michelle, Xavier...
Michelle, Xavier.
And we need...
And we need a third.
A third. So, normally, new board members don't serve our committees, but unless somebody wants to do two, we...
I think they count on this committee.
Okay, yeah, policy is a good one to learn the things. So, you want to do it?
Yes.
You can get there in time? Okay, it usually starts at 5:30.
I try and cater to their schedules.
Okay.
To your schedule, so...
Okay. Then we have our three. Can I have a motion?
Typically, if it's a 7:30 board meeting, Tom, we will start at 6:30. I try to do them a little bit more frequently.
No, 6:30, we usually start exact.
I'm sorry, you're right. It would be a 5:30.
5:30. That's why I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I didn't want to put a burden on you that you can't fulfill. Okay, so can I have a motion? Xavier, and a second? Michelle, all in favor? That's everyone, thank you. Thank you for volunteering. I use "doing" air quotes. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint one trustee to serve on the district-wide safety team for the 2021-2022 school year. Has that been you in the past, Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Last year.
Do you want to do it for me?
If someone else wants to continue to serve, I have no problem not doing it.
Does anybody really want to be on the Safety Committee, or should we have Michelle continue? All right, Michelle, I think it's you.
I think Michelle's doing a wonderful job.
So, I'm giving you a raise. And I have a motion. A motion from Kelly, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. Okay, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint one trustee to serve on the Wellness Committee for the 2021-2022 school year. I believe that we need a person for the Wellness Committee. And Kelly is graciously volunteering. Oh, Teresa, which one of you wants to do it?
Why don't you do it, since you're not on?
You want to do it, since you're not... Yeah, okay.
I was only going to suggest that because she, Teresa, is not on one yet, so...
Yep, okay. The Wellness Committee meetings are during the school day?
Yes, Kathy runs those, I believe they're in the morning.
Yeah, it's in the morning. One-hour meetings in the morning.
Is there a day of the week that it normally is, or no?
With the Wellness Committee?
Yeah.
We haven't established that yet for the 21...
Okay.
Yeah, 2022 school year.
Just want to make sure Teresa's schedule jives.
I was on it last year.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Even better.
Wednesdays, something like that.
Okay, then I need a motion.
And then I stop both of them.
From Bill, and a second from Michelle.
Now we've got to bring it back.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint members of the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education for the 2021-2022 school year, as outlined in the attached memorandum. I have a motion. Bill, and a second from Xavier. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that one trustee be appointed to review CSE and CPSC minutes, if needed, outside of the timeframe of regularly scheduled 21-22 board meetings, and, as appropriate, accept associated recommendations proposed by the CSE/CPSC on behalf of the Board of Education. So, this is not a time-consuming role? Does anybody want to give it a go?
I had that last year.
You did it, Kelly?
I can do it again.
You want me to do it?
I don't want to.
Kelly can do it.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. A motion then. From Michelle, and a second from Kelly, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education arrange for the appointment of an impartial hearing officer from the impartial hearing officer list... Am I doing that right? Yeah. In accordance with the rotational selection process established in Section 200.2EIIII and 200.2B9 of Part 200 Regulations of the Commissioner and the administrative procedures established by the Board of Education. Read both of them together?
You can combine those.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that one trustee be designated to approve appointment of impartial hearing officers between board meetings on behalf of the Board of Education, should the need arise during the 2021-2022 school year. If you all want me to do that, I could... I don't think it matters.
Your name's on the document.
Is my name on that document?
Yeah.
Well, there you go. Can I have a motion? Bill, and a second. From Kelly, all in favor? That's everyone.
I'm glad you were pointing. Just for the benefit of new trustees, numbers two and three there in Section I, I don't remember the last time either one of those occurred where things needed to be done between board meetings, that is for rare situations only.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of School that the Board of Education appoint George Austin, Lead Operations Manager, to serve as asbestos designee for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Xavier, and a second. From Bill, all in favor? Congratulations, George. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint building-level central treasurers for the 2021-22 school year, as delineated. Sorry. I have a motion. Xavier, and a second from Teresa, all in favor? Thank you, that's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education designate Mary Beth Robinette as the Chief Information Officer and Nancy Allard as the Backup Chief Information Officer for the 2021-2022 school year. I have a motion, please. From Michelle, and a second from Bill, all in favor? That's everyone.
And just to remind, Mary Beth is still... And she will be for some time in part-time capacity.
I thought you were going to say gracing us with her presence. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Kathleen Acker and Beth McCoy Assistant Superintendents as Civil Rights Compliance Officers for the 21-22 school year. I have a motion, please. From Teresa, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education appoint Mary Beth Robinette as the District's Data Protection Officer for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Tom, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint the Dignity Act Coordinators and Associated Support Personnel for the 2021-2022 school year, as delineated in the attached documentation. A motion. Xavier, and a second from Kelly, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint election personnel for the 2021-2022 year, as delineated in the attached memorandum. I have a motion, please. Xavier, and a second. From Kelly, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Eastern Suffolk Bosse to provide health and safety consultant services for the 2021-2022 school year. I have a motion. From Xavier, and a second. From Teresa, all in favor? Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint district lead evaluators for the 2021-2022 school year, as listed. A motion. Michelle, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone, thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Gail Mahoney to serve as the liaison for homeless children and youth for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Bill, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Joanne Miranda as the... As the Records Access Officer.
No, you skipped the purchasing.
Sorry. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Christine Dougherty as the district's purchasing agent, and Dr. Kathleen Acker Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services as the Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Kelly, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Joanne Miranda as the Records Access Officer and Records Management Officer for the 2021-2022 school year. I have a motion. From Michelle, and a second from Tom, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Dr. Kathleen Acker Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services as Residency Hearing Officer for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Teresa, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint George Austin, Lead Operations Manager, to serve as School Pesticide Representative for the 2021-2022 school year. I have a motion. Bill, did you raise your hand?
Sure.
And a second, I thought I saw you, sorry. And a second from Teresa. All in favor? It's all the best jobs.
George is always the big winner today. It's asbestos and pesticides. Exactly.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Beth McCoy Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction as the Section 504 Compliance Officer, relative to the Americans with Disabilities Act for the 2021-2022 school year. I have a motion from Tom, and a second from Kelly, all in favor? That's everyone, thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education appoint Diana Rich as the district's Substance Abuse Resource Information Contact for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Michelle, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. Okay. Next section. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education secure excess bonding, as listed below, for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Xavier, and a second. From Kelly, all in favor? Xavier, you raised your hand? Yes, that's everyone. Okay, moving on. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education designate and authorize the attached list of banking facilities to receive school district deposits for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Xavier, and a second. From Kelly. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education designate Huntington News, The Long Islander, The Times, Beacon Record, and Newsday as the newspapers authorized to receive print... Receive slash print the district's legal notices for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Teresa, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education designate the Superintendent of Schools, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services to certify all payrolls for the 2021-2022 school year. I have a motion. From Tom, and a second. From Xavier. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that petty cash accounts be maintained and administered by the designated employees at the locations and in the amounts listed below. A motion, please. From Teresa, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? That's everyone. Moving to authorizations. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board grant authority to the Superintendent of Schools to transfer funds within the 2021-2022 budget, as per Section 170.2 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education and District Policy 5140. A motion? From Xavier, and a second. From Kelly, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education grant authority to the Superintendent of Schools to apply for grants and sign all grant applications and reports for 2021-2022 state and federal grants. A motion, please. From Bill, and a second from Michelle, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education authorize the Board President and District Clerk to sign and execute contracts for health services during the 2021-22 school year. A motion. Xavier, and a second from Tom. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve organizations listed on the attached as users of Huntington School District facilities for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion, please. From Michelle, and a second from Kelly, all in favor? It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve the attached list of staff members to be reimbursed at the IRS rate for mileage expenses related to district business for the 21-22 school year. Motion. From Xavier, and a second from Kelly, all in favor? Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education authorize the Board President and District Clerk to enter into tuition contracts, as necessary, for the 2021-2022 school year. A motion from Xavier, and a second from Tom. All in favor? That's everyone. Okay, moving on to policies. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education waive first read and issue final approval of Policy 4212 Organizational Chart for the 2021-2022... I'm sorry, 42021-2022. A motion? Xavier, and a second. From Michelle, all in favor?
There were minimal changes made to that. I think there was a line added to the neighborhood aids, which was there anyway, but was now formalized on the chart from the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction's office.
Okay. Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education reaffirm Policy 5220 District Investments. A motion, please. From Xavier, and a second from Michelle, all in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education reaffirm purchasing policies 5410 Principles of Purchasing, 5420 Purchasing Competitive Bidding and Offering, and 5421 Procurement of Goods and Services, 5422 Alternative Formats for Instructional Services, and 5430 Contracts for Services and Materials. I have a motion, please. From Bill, and a second from Xavier, all in favor? Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education readopt all other current board policies, as delineated in the Huntington Union Free School District's Policy Manual. A motion, please. From Xavier, and a second from Tom. All in favor? Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education readopt the District Code of Conduct. A motion, please. From Xavier, and a second. From Michelle, all in favor? Those remain the same, the code of conduct?
Yes, no material changes. We may look to make some adjustments before the year begins, but that requires a public hearing.
Okay. Good, I think I had a question about that later.
And that can happen at any time during the year, but right now, that's...
Right. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached guidance plans for each district school and the district in its entirety for 2021-2022. A motion? Tom, and a second from Michelle. Is there anything you want to say about those?
Minor changes. Ms. Allamie has done a nice job across the district for the district plan, as well as for the individual school plans. Again, changing personnel and slightly realigning processes to go with that.
There's so much information in those plans, I really...
There is a lot, and just so those in the audience know, all of these documents that Ms. Bernanke is referring to, they're all posted online, they're on the board doc site, available for public viewing. These are a couple of documents you may wish to look at, as they pertain to your particular schools.
Okay. So, did we make a motion already?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I forgot. We made a motion, I say, all in favor? Oh, did we vote? No. All in favor? Sorry. Got distracted. Thank you.
You're almost to the end.
They blend together after a little bit, so.
You're almost there, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Sorry, this is my switching. Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution addressing club charter requirements and approve the attached extracurricular club charters as listed below. I have a motion from Xavier and a second from Michelle. All in, yes, so
I have one question on that.
Go ahead.
There were the few changes that were just made recently, are those charters updated here?
Charters will be added throughout the year as changes are made. I think this is updated as per as per today. Kathy, was there anything added since?
No.
No.
So it is current as to what we've seen?
But there will be more added in the fall.
Sure.
Yeah.
So the charters apply to any schools that have a paid advisor or have and/or have a TNA account that they work from.
Pretty much the ones that you're seeing on here are the ones that have bank accounts. The ones that are not on here yet that have a paid advisor, but they don't use money. And those will be done in the fall.
Okay.
And this is new, this is as per the recommendations of our internal and external auditor for that matter.
Great. All in favor? That's everyone, thank you. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached list of religious holidays for the 2021-2022 school year for the purpose of state aid computation. A motion? From Xavier and a second from Teresa. Just to clarify before we vote, this isn't a this isn't a list of holidays that people that are off of school, these are holidays that are recognized for people to have excused absences and, right?
These are these are holidays that you will not see on the district calendar, but they may be observed by various
Staffs and students.
In the school community, and if we don't reach an attendance threshold on those days, we won't lose state aid because of that.
All in favor? That's everyone, thank you. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution to continue in the national school lunch and breakfast programs. A motion, please. From Xavier and a second from Kelly. All in favor? Thank you. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education set school meal prices for the 2021-2022 school year as delineated. And I'll just read off the prices just for the public's information. Breakfast at $2.15. Elementary lunch at $2.90. Secondary lunch at $3.25. And milk at 50 cents.
And that's unchanged from 2021.
I have a motion? From Michelle and a second from Tom. All in favor? Do we know the status of the free lunch? I mean, that last year everyone got lunch?
I believe it extends until the end of the
Yes, it extends to the end of June 2022.
2022.
So we will be operating as a summer seamless operation next year, so it's again free breakfast and lunch for all.
Great, that's great.
And we'll be working along the same program as last year, or are we going back to
No, we're not going to be the SFSP, we're going to go back to the SSO because we went to the SFSP, which is the summer free school program, summer lunch school program, because the federal reimbursement rates were higher. But now the federal government is going to honor the SSO rates to be equal to the SFSP, so it made more sense to go back to that. So now we're back to operating under our Witten's contract with our million dollar guarantee.
And everybody follow that SFSP?
I know.
The fact that you could just say it without stuttering is pretty impressive.
Extremely impressive.
Okay. Is that the bottom?
That's it, you did it.
That's it. Nice job. I take a motion to adjourn the reorg meeting and rejoin our business meeting. I see hands up from a motion from Xavier and a second from Kelly, all in favor? Thank you, everyone, that was
Nice work, Christine.
painless. Thank you, I only skipped one, so that was, you know. Did I, or was he over under? Okay, let me switch agendas. So now I go back to here? It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve you okay? The minutes of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education meeting dated June 7th, 2021. I have a motion. From Michelle and a second from Xavier. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
I wasn't here, but I saw my name was missing from the attendee list, so nice job, Joanne.
I think I maybe it was a motion and then I remembered to tell everybody that.
There you go.
And then we have some FYIs. Budget appropriation reports. Budget transfers. Claim audit report. Revenue status report.
We await our last claims audit report at this point for June from R.S. Abrams, and just remember, we are switching over to Rock and Smith starting July 1.
Is that why they're a little slower coming? Sorry, I didn't say that.
That's why they're not on the list for July 1.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the May 2021 Treasurer's Report. I have a motion. From Xavier and a second from Michelle. Any questions on the Treasurer's Report? Otherwise, all in favor? That's everyone, thank you. And the warrants. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the attached warrants which were certified for payment on June 9th, 2021, and June 23rd, 2021. I have a motion, please. From Kelly and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Thank you, that's everyone. Okay, that brings us to Board Member Communications and Announcements. Who has what?
I would just like to welcome our two newer trustees at the table here. Appreciate your commitment and wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you. Yes, I think we all echo that. Anybody else?
You know, I think that the year-end festivities were pretty graduation is always one of my favorite time of the year, and it didn't let us down, it was a wonderful event, a great venue. I sat here in this same auditorium for one of the presentations, and I really got a feel for the love that teachers have for our students. Actually, very emotional in one episode where the teacher is describing of how she identified the talents, the math talents of the young man, and he was beyond talented. And it was really nice to hear her recount how she was able to identify the student's talent. We lost connectivity for a few because of the electricity, but as I was saying, year-end, it was a wonderful experience. We had it very difficult, as you all know, but it was nice to see how the teachers were able to appreciate the efforts by the students. And I wanted to personally thank them.
Anybody else?
Okay, I just wanted just to say at the beginning of a fresh new year, I just wanted to acknowledge everyone's efforts last year. I couldn't even name, couldn't even come close to making a list of the people that put in extra effort. It's the entire community. So I just wanted to do one more general acknowledgement of everything that everyone did to make our community as successful and as it possibly could have been last year. And fresh start, move forward, and hopefully everything is smoother.
Why are you looking at me? I didn't say anything. I'm not even breathing, I'm trying not to breathe.
And also every day I get to drop my daughter to work up here with the kids at the summer camp, and it's so nice to see all the smiling kids coming in to camp, so they're having a good time. And that's what it's about for summer, so. Anyone else have anything? Then we'll give it to Jim.
I'm sure Jim's going to cover this, but I, like Xavier and others, got to attend a few end of the year events, and they were fantastic to watch the kids, see the kids together. And I got to attend some really exciting sporting events, too. And that was, you know, really exciting, but I'm sure Jim's going to cover all that, so.
Go for it, then.
I don't want to get too specific here, and I don't want to get cut off because that sounds loud out there.
Yes.
I'll just echo the sentiments that have been shared. It was a it has been a challenging 15 months, and there is still some work to do in that respect. And there still remain a number of questions to be answered before we reopen again in September. But the work done in this district by members of every employee group, I there's not enough that I can say at this table to recognize the commitment and the dedication that these folks across this district have for our students, for their families, for each other, and for the school community. I've said it before, I will say it again, I would not want to do what I do anywhere else but here. We have special families across this district, we have people that continue to go above and beyond, and there's always work to be done. We are not necessarily where we want to be in every respect, but I know looking around this room tonight, the people that are here and the people that we'll be bringing on board are committed to getting us to where we need to be as thoroughly and as comprehensively as they can, so many thanks, and my thanks to all. Just a couple of end of year items that came up, I may have mentioned them already. The State Education Department applied to the federal, the USDA, the US Department of Education for an accountability an assessment and accountability waiver that has since been approved. The APPR process has been eradicated in large part for the 220-221 school year. My guess is it will recommence, it'll begin again in 21-22. Just to echo the sentiments about the end of year events, I'd like to acknowledge all involved. And it was a tough year, but to have a beautiful last two weeks of weather, to have our outdoor ceremonies at our primary and intermediate schools and our middle school as well, and to finish the year with that commencement, we couldn't have asked for any more than that. The showcases at the end of the year, there were there were so many of them, not to highlight every one of them. We had an outstanding spring sports season that you know already, not to get into details there, but we have county champion track team, we have a county champion baseball team, and we had a number of other teams that did very well and entered the playoffs on a win streak, and that's, it's nice, but the enjoyment that the kids got out of this, particularly after the months that we've experienced prior to that, you can't you can't find a way, a better way to rebuild spirit than with the activities in the schools, on the field, et cetera. I would like to thank, I know he's not here tonight, but Mr. Cusack, Ms. Alamea, for the work that they did coordinating the award ceremonies. Commencement exercises obviously are a labor of love, and they came out as as that labor of love would suggest, they did as Xavier mentioned. And in outdoor senior prom, kids didn't know what to make of it. You had kids leaving that night, and I got there late because I had another event to go to before then. I saw a lot of them on the way out. Many of them asked if we could do that again in that same venue. Trying to make it special for the kids is what it's all about, and that was accomplished, so thank you to all involved there. And we're on our way with summer programs, and we can only hope that the conditions don't regress in any way, shape, or form, and things continue to move in the right direction. Thank you for that opportunity.
I think Mr. Cusack said he was listening, so I'm sure I heard you.
I hope he was.
That's what he told me. Okay, so that brings us to our first public commentary. Since it's our first public commentary of the school year, I thought I'd give a little tiny bit more detail, even though there's not so many people here, but hopefully people are listening. Right, I'm not going out of order, it's public commentary, right?
You're right.
The the Board and the administration welcome everyone back to our in-person meetings. That's very exciting, and one of the benefits of that is that we get to hear in-person comments. I want to remind everybody that in order to be eligible to come to the mic to give us your comments, you need to be either a staff member or a resident of the district. The limitations on what you can say at the mic are that we generally give everybody three minutes to speak. We limit it to 30 minutes total for the first public commentary, and the first speakers should be on the subjects that are for items for discussion and action on the agenda. After those people have spoken, people can speak on other topics. You may not name personnel by name or speak about their performance as a, as an employee, and also we ask that you don't mention specific students. And just to emphasize that this is a time for comments, not necessarily a time for question and answer. It is with the prerogative of the Board President and the Superintendent, if a question is asked, if it will be answered on the spot. But you're always welcome to follow up with a writing or a phone call, because we are always available. With that being said, does anyone wish to come to the mic and make a comment? We'll see. I scared you all off. Okay. Not my intention. Okay, then. Our first item for discussion and action is summer facility work update, which will be presented by both of you or just by Dr. Acker?
We're going to do this
Do you want the thing?
We're going to do this, now you want to stay there and just
Sure.
just forward, this is going to be quick, but first of all, I'd like to thank
I'm going to move over there, I think.
If you'd like.
Yeah.
This is not a full-fledged presentation, per se, but whatever makes
Just go over here.
More comfortable. And I'm just going to stay here so we can interact. But first of all, thank you to Kathy and to George, because this was something I kind of threw at them last minute last week. I would have made comments during the announcement period regarding some of the work that's being done here this summer. There is a lot of it, and it's not all capital work. So I did ask them to put together a composite of information for me, so this could be created, we could share tonight and give you, the Board and the community, a sense of the incredibly voluminous and exciting work that's being done here over the summer. Michelle, is that you?
No.
I thought you were laughing, I haven't even gotten started yet.
I'm not saying anything.
Okay. So a couple of comments before we get into the list, and then the Board can ask questions. We are in a position right now where we have additional funding for some things related to facilities, and also recognize that we budgeted last year with 15% cut in state aid in mind, and that cut never materialized, and we're happy about that. Some districts did roll the dice and budgeted full package of state aid and hoped it would not be cut, and it wasn't, so it's good for everyone here. So we did have some additional foundation aid to work with to do some of what you're going to see on the slides upcoming. We received additional E-rate funding, we received additional high cost, excess cost aid, it's an expense-based aid, we received additional aid in that category. And the smart schools allocation as well, so we're trying to make sure that what we do makes sense for every school, every student, every family in this district, so this will give you a sense of some of the things that are going on in each of our buildings, I don't want to read the slides to you, but
I was going to hop in real quick, so when George and I, you know, we knew we, early on, we had this additional funding coming in, and George and I sat down to say, okay, what could we do with this that would really help address a lot of the stuff in the FIGR Capital Plan. So that's pretty much what we worked off of. So when we get our new condition survey report this year, those things will no longer be on it. So many of these things are coming directly from our FIGR Capital Plan to get a jump on before this, you know, we get the new condition survey report, so that was our goal, is to try and address as many of those items that we could.
And it also frees up capital funding
Yep.
for other projects moving forward that we have discussed collectively. Okay, so is Flower Hill behind me?
Flower Hill's behind you.
So again, fences, gates, swing sets, you're going to start to see a recurring theme across school buildings here, a number of our elementary schools have new playgrounds. And they were due, I mean, some of these have been in place for a long time, some of them were built for other grade levels. We fixed that.
And some of the fencing and gate replacements or addition of fences where there's some areas where students were playing during recess or whatnot, and there was no separation between them and the parking lot. So we added a lot of fencing, so if they're kicking a ball around, the ball isn't rolling into the parking lot and whatnot.
Which is always helpful.
It is. Jefferson's behind you.
Okay, Jefferson, again, by building, need by building. The fence at Jefferson, and Donovan knows this, it not only goes along Oakwood Road, it comes around and goes all the way up the parking lot, that wasn't there before, and that's why it does say a new fence installation. There's a piece of it that was replaced, playground is new. Doors, we've been doing that across the district in recent years. We took care of Jefferson at this time. The parking lot repaved. Replacements on the, on the blacktop, and actually I'd like to commend the Jefferson parents for really doing a great job on that blacktop, they painted a map of the United States and a fitness trail and all kinds of fun They painted a map of the United States, and a fitness trail, and all kinds of fun things for the kids. Gym doors are on their way out, curtains in, we had done it in some areas, this allowed us to continue that. Broken sidewalk slabs, curbs also taken care of at this time.
Again, most of this was on the FIGER Condition Report, and our playgrounds are now ADA accessible.
These projects are all being completed in-house, by in-house employees?
Yep.
And we don't need to have the architects?
No, because the playgrounds were already existing, so it's just considered a replacement. So, with the playgrounds, the company is installing them, we're not installing them. But we did the grading to prepare for it, but anything here did not require the architects to, anything had to go to the state.
Yeah, and there is a cost attached to this, these are not free projects.
No.
But again, to cover that, use of foundation aid, and all of the other aids I just mentioned, I mean, we're talking in the neighborhood of $3 million.
Xavier, would you ask, just make sure your mic's on when you ask a question?
No, he doesn't.
Oh, you don't? I thought you had one now.
I have a question about the-
You wanna take Joanna's mic at this point?
Oh, that's what I thought you did, I'm sorry.
Oh, we were sharing.
Oh, okay.
Can you just explain the gym doors? The gym doors, can you explain?
The gym doors, meaning the doors that would separate one side of the gym from the other.
Oh, that, okay. Those would be curtains.
The accordion doors now being replaced with curtains, a much safer bet. All the mechanisms were not-
They were barely compliant.
Doors that weren't compliant, but we'd rather have the curtains in place.
And that was on the FIGER Capital Plan, to replace those doors with the curtains.
Yep, fire in questions when you have them.
Can I ask about the architects, because they're savings when you don't use the architects, right?
I did label in this, anything that was capital-oriented, I did label the capital, if you didn't see that, in Flower Hill and Jefferson, you will see it at South Downs.
And Kathy, I just ask a quick question, the Condition Survey Report, I'm assuming is an outside entity that-
The architects review. They have to come in, yep.
And they make suggestions based on what they find as to what should be replaced.
And they submit to the state, and then we're required to work through it.
Okay.
One more thing I just want to point out about the fence, my mic isn't working, but I was told that the Jefferson fence, it's one of those types where you can insert the little pods that will let you do a graphic or a wording. Previously, we had been using, like, solo cups, so this is a big upgrade for us parents who are doing it, yes.
And it comes out a lot neater when it's-
Yeah, for sure.
A lot more colorful. We're happy to do that.
Yeah, South Downs behind you.
Okay, so the first project there is capital, that's the rooftop solar, that goes back to voter approval in 2020. And then again, some of the common themes here, playground swing set, South Downs was actually being worked on as they were, went up to their field day, and they were working very quickly. New fence installation there, basketball court backwards, also, there are two signs in the district, and this is kind of a, little bit of a pet peeve of mine, the Jefferson Elementary sign, and I didn't even include that here, but that's gonna be replaced as well, that's really more-
Yeah, the cat word.
Less significant cost, it's not insignificant, but that's that sign right on the stone wall when you're walking in, it'll be to your right. And the South Downs sign on the corner of Browns and South Downs Road, it's on the post, it's also starting to deteriorate, so that's gonna be replaced as well.
Washington?
Okay, and Washington, if you're a frequent visitor, Washington, we redid that playground years ago, Victoria's Playground, so that's a relatively new and really good-quality playground, that's in good working order, so it didn't need what some of the other schools needed. And the way it came about is truly tragic, but, you know, her memory lives on, a little girl who was killed in a boating accident years ago. But we did pave the outdoor play area, or are planning to pave the outdoor play area, and the swing set will be replaced.
Jack Abrams?
A number of things here, the first being capital, the reason we're sitting here this evening, first of all, it's air-conditioned, and second of all, the Jack Abrams auditorium is now just a pile of rubble. It is being refurbished as we speak, playground there has been replaced, fire-rated doors, parking lot in two areas, gym door with curtain, same thing that Kelly mentioned. ACM stands for asbestos-containing material. When new flooring is installed, the old has to be removed, and it has to be abated, so that's going on as we speak. If you drive by Jack Abrams and you see those thick tubes coming out of the schools, it is not a spaceship, it's not gonna take off. It is us doing the abatement, George and his crew, or the folks that are coming in to actually do that from the outside, and the transportation office floor is being redone as well.
Okay, Woodhall?
Okay, Woodhall, that playground actually was replaced not too long ago by insurance, if I'm not mistaken, but that is also being refurbished and replaced. Parking lot was done not too long ago, we're repaving and restriping, it goes quickly when there's that much traffic in the lot, same thing here, you saw as you drove in, and gym door and curtain, same exchange.
Jay Taylor Finley?
The first thing you'll notice if you drive by Finley is that there is something missing, and that is by design. Nobody took it, nobody would want the thing. For those that haven't been there in a while and know Finley, the awning that does this doesn't do that anymore because it's gone. That's gone, it'll be replaced with two large canopies that look a little bit like the one that's at the administrative office entrances at this point. The capital projects that were voter-approved in 2020, the two boilers and the science classroom laboratory network there, those are underway. Fire-rated doors, canopy I just mentioned, concrete and curbs that go along when you take that canopy out, the existing canopy, it's gonna pull up the sidewalk, that is being fixed as well. Tennis court is gonna look absolutely beautiful in both the middle and high schools, sprinkler system on the football field, and some work in the nurse's office to make it ADA-compliant, ceiling, floors, lighting, and some other areas that have to be abated as the floors are being replaced.
And the high school.
Okay, this one, I had to break into two slides. Partial roof replacement, it's on that end of the building, over the gym area, that is, we had our excitement with that in terms of moving some, it's hard to get materials for these projects at this point apparently, but we're close to being underway there. Some other roof repair is being done in areas that need to be overhauled in future summer work. Asbestos removal, new flooring, a number of classrooms and hallways, cafeterias, library renovation. Library was primarily redone a couple of summers ago, there were some pieces missing, some old remnants of wood walls that are being taken down, glass walls to replace, new shelves and seating, it's gonna look beautiful, it already does, this is gonna put the final touches on that. I know Beth pays attention to every item at every library in this district, so I need to make sure that it meets her standards. The video classroom and laboratory installation, that'll take place in the old rooms, 249 and 250 where computer labs were. Tennis court, resurfacing, new concrete steps. I remember this couple of weeks ago, Ms. Palacios was giving me the business about the retaining wall, that's gone, and a new one in its place, and it really did need to be replaced, it looked horrible, it's gonna look like a whole new area, we're excited about that. Fire-rated doors, if you go to the next slide, the gym is gonna look brand-new, so much brighter, the lights have already been replaced, the gym is painted, if you've noticed, if you've been in there recently, the banners have been taken, those felt banners have been taken down. Thank you to Mr. Hoops for a number of things here, but putting the mock-up together for those banners and just going back and forth so we got something that we were pleased with, the gym is gonna look like a whole new facility. We're also excited to be re-outfitting, it's time, re-outfitting the district with new uniforms and supplies from top to bottom. Baseball field has been replaced since the season ended, sprinkler system rehabilitation, parking lot resurfacing, repaving. We are putting a set of outdoor basketball courts on that gravel, in that gravel area by the gym, backside of the gym. At some point, that project adventure apparatus will be coming down because the insurance has expired on that. New fence installation by the gym, and I know Kathy is working with George and our tech staff, we're going to be basically upgrading our NOC, our Network Operating Center, and that's going to be an expense, but we're in need of doing that at this point.
Yeah, a lot of our equipment's going into life.
This is not, this is not a boring summer with respect to facilities, and my hope is that the kids and our staff are gonna be as excited as we are about the work that's being done.
I had a question on the prior slide, the video classroom, it's moving up from the basement to the second floor, or something?
No, the video classroom is going, there's going to be the video classroom in the basement, there's going to be another video classroom and laboratory setup in 249 and 250.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It'll accommodate different classes.
Okay. And this is, this is an incredibly large list. I know, you hear the butt coming. Last summer, we were gonna refinish this, and then COVID happened, this stage. Is there any way that that could get tacked into our future list?
Future list.
Yeah, because I kinda told everybody last summer, when we announced it at a meeting, and then COVID, so, yeah.
We're gonna get it all now.
Mm-hmm.
But for this summer-
It's a great list, it's amazing. Anybody have questions?
No, looks great, thank you.
We have all the cost breakouts, and those are, you know, certainly, want to be as transparent as possible with that, but a credit to our staff here, George and his crew, and Kathy, for coming up with ways to do this in the most structurally sound and fiscally responsible manner possible.
I really appreciate it.
So, the classrooms that are slated for the asbestos containment work-
Which slide?
The, and the high school, I think there was some at-
Just in general?
Just in general.
In general, okay.
How do they determine which classrooms or which rooms to work on?
We've been just kinda working through the district to start to slowly abate all the spaces.
Okay.
So, some of the areas that are older spaces, they'll just do a chunk of them all at once, a whole wing, and then the whole wing is done, and then they'll move to another wing, it's just something that, as it comes up, we kinda move around the building. And if there's, you know, there could be some areas that are rougher, like, could have some cracked tiles, so then obviously, we're gonna go after those areas.
Gotcha, so it's just general condition?
Yeah, we're just working our way through, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yes, asbestos removal is expensive, so that's where the cost lies. You'll also notice that, I'm a big fan of Torazo, that's the marble-looking, they're not even tiles, but that's how, when you clean them, it looks like it's brand-new. It's the areas, there is Torazo in this building right outside, but there's also areas that have tile floor, that tends to start to look dirty over time, so it's gonna be based on appearance and age.
Sure.
But obviously, in the next couple of years, we're gonna complete it across the district.
Is it more, it must be more of a challenge in the rooms where the tables are affixed than classrooms that have-
Tables have to be affixed, too, and that's the case.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you rip everything out.
Yes, I don't know if they, some of them may have the tables fixed, it depends on-
You just rip the whole thing out.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's more of a process.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much, that was-
And if you have additional questions or suggestions, just reach out to us and let us know where your, where your questions are.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And again, thank you to Kathy and George.
Thank you, Kathy, George, the whole team, you know.
Yeah, it's exciting.
I know, you can't go out there and do it all by yourself, so, yeah.
She got here at 5:00 AM this morning, and I saw her on the-
She had the thing scraped out of the tub.
I did see my, my-
Gabby?
Gabby, our food service supervisor, I'm sure she wouldn't mind, she was on the floor under a cart, basically on her back-
With a ratchet.
With a ratchet, fixing the cart.
Because she had got new freezers and didn't want anybody else to take them out of the crates. So, she's on the floor underneath it, ratcheting, and the custodians were watching her, and she's like, no one's touching it.
I would've joined her there in a heartbeat, she didn't want anybody anywhere near that point.
No, she didn't want anyone near her new freezer.
But that's what makes this district what it is.
It's awesome.
Right there is a perfect example, so thank you to her.
That Finley awning came down pretty quick.
Great.
That was great.
When you hate it that much, it comes down that quick.
Well, we know Michelle hated it.
Michelle took it down.
George personally took three days with his crew to take that down. And how much did those beams weigh?
Wow.
2,200 pounds.
Michelle is a lot stronger than she is.
Well, Joey doesn't attend Finley anymore, but he will be glad that the birds won't be congregating there anymore. He's have to, like, time it to get in the building to get past the birds.
There have been episodes with those birds that I won't go into in a public forum, but that canopy needed to come down.
Okay. All right, moving on. There's no, oh wait, I lost my connection, hold on, I have to-
I'll start.
Go ahead, you start, yes, please.
There is nothing to approve here, all the remaining items for discussion action are first reads of policies that the Policy Committee has heard, they've seen, they've provided suggestions, some of which I have incorporated, I've also sent each of these to counsel for further review, because they are all connected to just revising some of our EEO harassment, dignity for all students-type policies in alignment with the changes made to Title IX, which may in fact change again very shortly, but we're trying to stay as much on top of this as we can. One of the questions, there was some suggestions and questions, one of the questions came up from the Policy Committee, you know, why are some of the classes, protected classes being mentioned in one policy different from another? And I did send that to the attorneys, and one of the responses, or the primary response I got back is the statutes that connect to each one of these are actually different, and they're reflected differently in those statutes. But what I did in response to that is send them for a final review by our attorneys, so they can come back with any additional changes that they think are necessary, and I will present those to the Board, hopefully by, assuming they work rapidly enough, by August 2nd, whenever our next, our first August Board meeting is.
Okay, but we're not approving a first read, we're just-
No, there's no approval, this is informational, you have to, you have to see and discuss as a full Board, Policy Committee sees first, you have to see and discuss as a full Board first, if you have any questions, you can ask them now, or you can reach out to me in between the two meetings, but rather than go into each one of these additionally, the driving force behind these policies collectively is the same, and that's aligning them with each other and with the new Title IX policy that the Board already enacted.
Right, and just to be clear, none of these are new policies, these are all revisions of policies to reflect current states of the law?
You know, that was there, there was, hang on one second, I thought there was something new here, but I could be wrong.
I think they all say it was revised.
I thought 8220, but it looks like that was revised as well, we go through so many of these on a routine basis.
So, I'm just pointing that out in case anybody was wondering why we have all these policies and not so much discussion, it's because these have been discussed and approved in the past, and right now, the revisions are to align them with the current state of federal and state law.
Right, and for the benefit of our new trustees, if you open any of these policies, you will see them, if they are, if they are so thoroughly revised that it doesn't make sense to edit them, then you'll see a new policy, and I'll note that in the verbiage, this is all public documentation, so anybody looking at Word docs can see it. If it is a revision, it could be, it could be a simple word that's changed, if it's material, you're going to see it reflected, the existing policy is tracked, so you'll see anything redlined that's taken out, and anything in blue is being added. And again, there's no policy that's generally just created from nothing, they're all aligned with either a statute, a regulation, another policy, or a practice. And the Policy Committee does review after I've gone through them with my team here, and then with the attorneys for their first go-around, and then I bring back to them anything that we see, or the Policy Committee sees, so they can look at it again. So, that's where we are now, and based on some of the changes that were, that were made and some of the questions that were asked, they're gonna look at them again.
Okay, so, if anyone has any questions now, that's fine, if not, we can, you know, you can, you can take the rest of your summer, you know, your July, to review them, and then in August, ask questions, or you can also ask questions in between to Jim directly.
Because one of the things to keep in mind again is that there has been some talk of Title IX being modified yet again, that tends to follow with federal government, so, you know, we're, anytime there's something in a policy that does not align with the current statute, the statute, the regulation, they take precedence over every policy, so we are right now trying to-
Catch up to that.
Well, we've done a pretty good job, but there is no policy person in the district that generally calls upon Joanna and myself, and then those, Beth is working right now on a slew of policies that are related to home-down destruction, which she just brought to my attention this morning, so she's gonna be locked up for the next who-knows-how-many weeks working on those. So, depending on where they're coming from, we try and stay as on top of this as we possibly can, and I do commend my staff here for doing that. Just a good example, very timely.
Yes. And also, we avail ourselves of the services of a policy service to help us make sure that we're staying on course.
We use Erie One policies, and they are crafting policy with their attorneys in response to changes in law, changes in regulation, changes in policy at the state or federal level, those are all reflected in our policies, and if you look at any given policy, you'll see at the bottom of it, "are cited." see at the bottom of it are cited the pertinent laws, regulations, et cetera, that go along with it or that are driving it.
I just want to, one thing I note, 7531 states it's a revision. I don't see any colored text in it anywhere.
Because it was, it was so significantly overhauled that.
Thank you.
It was revised, but it actually was taken out and redone.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
By the time it was redlined, it would look like a completely different policy, and it was just easier to get.
Couldn't follow it.
Understood, yep.
Okay, great. So we look forward to talking about those again. That brings us to Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools, MI. That the Board of Education approves CSC, CPSC submissions as delineated.
I have a motion, please. From Xavier and a second from Bill. All in favor? That's everybody.
It is upon the recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the 2021, 2022 District Comprehensive Improvement Plan.
I have a motion, please. From Xavier and a second from Michelle. You look like you have something to say.
No, this is really just a rollover because there was no process in 2021 because it was waived, so this is really a carryover from last year.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? That's everyone. Back to you, Mr. Polanski.
Okay, and thanks to our folks here for being so patient, but I am asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 15, 16, 19, and 22.
You always just like to say it fast.
I do.
A motion, please. Xavier, was this something you need?
Oh, you want to, yes, because. So let's go with 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 15, 16, 19, and 22.
Now may I have a motion? Michelle and a second from Teresa. All in favor? That's everyone, thank you.
And now go to 13.
And now, just 13. I have a motion to approve Schedule 13. A motion from somebody. Michelle and a second from Bill. All in favor? Except Xavier. Okay. I'll sit back while you announce.
I know some folks are not here tonight, but.
Maybe they're listening.
I'm sure that, I hope they are, and if they're not, I'm sure they're going to be thrilled regardless. What I'm going to ask you to do, I won't embarrass you by asking you to stand up and introduce yourselves and maybe do a little dance. I did have that one.
Everything with a dance.
Just maybe a quick half-rise and a wave so we know you're out there.
Yes, we understand.
I'm going to start in Schedule 3, and it's in alphabetical order. So starting with our new foreign language, world language teacher at the high school, Monica Alquio. Welcome, Monica. New math teacher at the secondary level, Alexa Balastrieri. And I do want to do this more justice because they've waited so long, but understand, there has been a lot of recruiting and hiring this summer, and we are so incredibly excited to have these people on board with us, and they are excited not just be teaching, but to be teaching in Huntington, and they know now, they knew before they got here that this is what they were looking for, and we're excited to have them.
I hope if you say to Lilian, you'll come up and say hi. Just putting that out there.
Some of them bite. You'll have to guess which ones.
Did you mean us or them?
No, I meant you. I honestly, I don't know.
We'll find out.
They didn't during the interview process. I was talking about the board members, but anything possible. Okay. Welcome to Jill Brandell in the area of English Language Arts. She'll be joining us at Finley Middle School. We have a handful of new librarians joining us, and I know this makes Beth very excited and happy. At Woodhall, joining us is Andrew Cumming. At the elementary level, I think she's going to Jefferson. I don't want to be proven wrong, so I'm going to say I think, Elizabeth Ferrara. Joining us in the area of ENL, Kristen Feeney. Kristen. And special education, not really a new teacher, has been with us for some time in leave capacity and has done a great job, Jean Gergenti. Social worker, joining us at multiple levels, but Mary Guzman Lewis. In the area of reading, Sarit Hike. Sarit has been with us for. Not to embarrass Sarit, but she's been with us for a little bit, and I know she fell in love with Huntington, so thank you for doing that. In the area of ENL also, Lorna Herbert. Welcome, Lorna. Also joining us as a social worker, you'll recall that we expanded staff this year based on our discretionary foundation aid. In fusion, Catherine Giuliano. In the area of special education, Mallory McClafferty. Welcome, Mallory. At the elementary level, teaching elementary education, which makes perfect sense, Jacqueline Rivas. New school psychologist, Jessica Rodriguez. And it just so happens that the last two on this schedule by Alpha are at the end, but not least, two physical education teachers joining us for the first time. I saw one of them back there. He's wearing the bright blue shirt. Welcome to Anik Salva. And also joining us, and she has done some work for us in the past, Huntington alum Shay Scully. Okay, joining us in part-time capacity in the area of world language, Olivia Roberts. Olivia has been working with us. She's done a terrific job down at Jefferson, and we're happy to have her here. Also joining us, and actually not new to the district, but joining us in leave replacement capacity, special education high school, Cara Burnow. We are thrilled to have Joe Melizia joining us in leave capacity as a physics teacher. And also, not brand new to the district, but rejoining us in leave capacity, special education at Jefferson, Kristen Schandlmeyer. Bear with me. Okay, I'm up to Schedule 9 here. New tenure appointment. Is Valerie here tonight? There she is. Okay, and I can even see, and I'm lying past the second row. Valerie Collinger, you may have seen her name listed as Monfort on the lead evaluator list, which has to be changed, but Valerie has been with us as a special education chair for a number of years, a true team player, has done a terrific job, has, has earned everything, and we're happy to have her on as a now tenured special education chair. Congratulations, Valerie. And honestly, I know she's going to be working with Nicole Silva, who is new to us and already, you see the camaraderie and learning from each other is something that we do all the time, so thank you again to Valerie and of course to Diana. Okay. All right, I'm moving on to Schedule 13, and I do want to highlight here, as I mentioned to the board, with the additional foundation aid in discretionary form that allowed us to expand staff a little bit, we are bringing on another, this is not, this is not an aide that goes in the aide monitors unit per se, but this is a neighborhood aide, which is a little bit different. It's a non-contractual position. We added a third, and I know she's here tonight. I am thrilled to welcome Karina Mendez to the Huntington School family, although I think she's.
She was under the bright lights.
I actually worked with Karina in the past, and we couldn't ask for something better to fill the seat.
Fantastic.
Welcome, Karina. And I think.
We don't do retirements or anything like that, right?
I don't think we have to announce the four nurses who work in kindergarten orientation.
No, I'm saying we don't do retirements or anything like that, right?
Actually, I should do that. Let me go back to Schedule.
16. No, 13, 10.
No, it's 10. Yeah, the one that I, I'm sorry I missed this. This came very quickly. This will be the swan song for somebody we've, we've come to know and to love. This will be Linda Castella Ross, last year, as special education chairperson. So congratulations to Linda. She will obviously leave this place better than she found it, and, you know, we're, we're happy for her, so congratulations to Linda. Thank you, folks, for, for being here. You're almost to the end, so if you can stick around and just mill about after and meet some folks, we'd love you to do that, so.
Okay. That brings us to Dr. Ecker.
Okay, it's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through Q on this evening's business agenda.
I have a motion, please. From Kelly and a second from Xavier. All in favor? That's everyone. Xavier, you have announcements to make?
Yes, we have some donations. Mrs. Susan Lustig is presenting a donation of a Yamaha M270 AW upright piano to the Huntington School Music Department. This donation has an approximate value of $5,000. Thank you to Mrs. Susan, Mrs. Susan Lustig. Miss Heidi Prue is presenting a donation of an Everett upright piano to the Huntington School Music Department. This donation has an approximate value of $500. Thank you to Miss Heidi Prue. And Staples of Huntington Station is presenting a donation of 518 bags of hand sanitizers and tissues to the district's primary schools. This donation has an approximate value of $2,590.
That's a lot of tissues.
Yes.
Mr. Polanski, you have a.
Special thank you to Dr. Richards for facilitating that.
Oh, nice. You have an announcement? Do you usually announce when we, no? Okay.
Tell us about the, what is it, the refrigerated trailer? What's that for?
Okay. Do you want me to?
Go ahead.
All right, so what happened was during last year, during the last school year during COVID, because the form, the way that we had to deliver the meals all over the place, we had to rent outdoor refrigeration units because we couldn't, we didn't have room in our regular to keep the food good. So we decided that it would be prudent for us to be able to purchase our own, and it could be moved to any building, so if we have any refrigeration issues, that we can also address it with the use of the trailer. So it kind of was a twofold, you know, we're, we're able to deliver food in any manner now and keep it, a large quantity of food refrigerated. So that's why we went out. Instead of renting, we said we should just purchase our own.
How big is that, Kathy? You say large quantity?
I don't have the dimensions. It should be listed. You said, how big is it?
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah, roughly. George? What?
Four by eight, he said.
Four by eight by seven.
That's a big tailgate party.
Big tailgate party.
But there might be other uses for it, too. I mean.
Yeah, I don't think that was the reason we purchased it.
Right, no.
What did Xavier say?
I'm not saying to have a tailgate party, but I'm saying like, no, but there are events where maybe it could be useful, you know, when we have.
A tailgate party.
When, well, bonfire is a big tailgate party, right? So I was thinking something like that, yes.
You get to the point where you rent something enough, you realize that it's going to be cheaper if you just buy it?
Yes, yes. Okay. So that brings us to our second public commentary. Same rules apply, but you can speak on any subject. I have a feeling that we don't have any, because I think I can account for everybody in the room at the moment. Okay. So comments by board members? Congratulations to our new trustees on surviving your first reorg.
Trial by fire.
Business meeting. Great job. You both raised your hands.